Required to be passed by the Board of Selectmen to then allow for the referendum question to go forward. So I would suggest a discussion with the Selectmen on the ordinance and then there has to be a roll call vote on it. And then we go into the referendum question where the joint public session with the Budget Committee and and Selectmen would take place. The ordinance is a requirement of our Charter. The Charter calls for a bond ordinance to be enacted so that the public is aware that there is authorization to go forward with a referendum question on the ballot. It's a lengthy document that our Bond Council put together. And so it makes no sense to read it, but everyone I hope has a copy of it. It was part of the public hearing.
Are we going to talk about what's in it though, right?
You can talk about what's in it. It's, we're going to repeat ourselves because what it allows for is the referendum question where we're going to talk about the projects and so forth.
John, it only says two seawalls. Should it say three?
So if the public hearing is two parts, one is the ordinance entitled an ordinance to authorize the issuance of bonds in the principal amount of $4,500,000 to fund road seawall and bridge infrastructure repair improvement projects. And then on the referendum question on the project financing proposed to be submitted to the voters. So the ordinance is the gateway to the ballot for the referendum question. And so it's a discussion of whether you want the ordinance to go forward or not.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
On the paperwork that you're talking about where it's Section 14 for the secret ballot referendum, it only itemizes two seawalls. Should it have three?
It should, but are we on, are you talking about the ordinance section?
Section 14, 14.1. Secret ballot referendum.
Yeah, we're not there yet. We're on the ordinance.
I hear you. I just wanted to ask a question.
You can ask that when we get to that. I mean, yeah, all right, Marissa? Right now it's just on the ordinance part.
That's right.
Hold that forward.
Right. The motion is in your packet to, I believe it's to enact the.
The motion is here. I see the motion. Yeah. But I'm, do you, does everybody want me to just do it and then we can talk about it? Or do you want to just?
You can get the motion on the table and then.
Yeah, I get that. Then we can discuss it.
Yes, call for the motion.
Okay. I move to close, well, that's a public hearing. Well, again, well.
Page two, Kathy.
It would be the motion one.
Oh, I moved from end chapter.
No, right on the front page, Kathy.
I do have it on the front page. It says BOS motion one says I move to close the public hearing and move that the Board of Selectmen adopt the ordinance called.
Yeah, ordinance to authorize.
All right, that's the one you want then. I just want the right one. Okay, I move to close the public hearing and move that the Board of Selectmen adopt the ordinance entitled an ordinance to authorize issuance of bonds in principal amount of up to $4,500,000 to fund road, bridge and seawall, infrastructure repair and improvement project in form presented to this meeting.
I'll take a second and then we'll discuss.
Second.
Thank you, John.
We are intending to close the public hearing.
Just on the ordinance, just.
Just the ordinance.
We're going to discuss it now amongst the board.
All right.
Is there questions from the board?
I don't have a question on this because it's really the whole ordinance that will be talking about this.
To me, this is just.
Formality.
Formality. Let's just get this piece done, vote on it. And then if you want to have discussion on the actual bond, let's have a discussion on the bond. But this is, to me, let's just get.
This is, this is, I don't, yeah, I don't step, I don't, we already, well, the motion's there, we just vote on it.
Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It has to be a roll call. So did you get all those?
All right.
Yeah, yeah.
It's five zero, so all in favor, we're all.
Right.
And now, Mr. Chairman, the referendum question is before both boards, the Budget Board and the Board of Selectmen. It's a referendum question. Shall the Town of Wells Board of Selectmen be authorized to issue bonds in the total amount not to exceed $4,500,000 for the purpose of funding costs of an infrastructure project to repair and improve roads, seawalls and a bridge and related infrastructure, including Swamp John Road, Pine Ledge Drive, Robinson Road, Drake's Island Bridge, Webb Hanat Seawall and the Casino Square Seawall to make the bonds subject to call for redemption with all or without premium to prioritize and to add or subtract from these project components and the project scope to keep costs within available funding and to acquire project-related easements and other real estate interests, including drainage easements for Pine Ledge Drive and Robinson Road.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Ah, okay. No.
Leah, does this need to be a roll call vote?
No, the other, the other one was, but we got it anyway.
Wait, so are we not discussing this bond right?
Yes, we could, we can discuss it as both committees and then you can vote on it individually.
Right, okay. So I wouldn't vote on it. Now we didn't discuss it.
We'll hold off on the vote until we discuss.
I think.
Thank you.
I think Marissa made a good point now because the Crescent Beach seawall is not mentioned in there. And that's, that's a million dollars right there. That's a big chunk of this 4.5. So if this is approved the way it reads, then what happens there, John? Crescent Beach?
You're right, we'll pencil in Crescent Beach on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So.
So I have to admit, that would be an amendment at that point.
Right. So the Budget Board doesn't have a motion or a second, but yet we'll discuss this with you, I guess. Do you want to do it that way?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want us, is it appropriate for us to have a motion and a second? So you've got two motions on top of each other? And then we're discussing together and then this vote? Okay.
Yes, yes.
Leah's saying, should I use that little icon though that says thumbs up, but I can see her saying. Okay, so a motion from the, someone on the Budget Committee then, please, that mirrors what Kathy just. With the addition of the Crescent Beach seawall. So who moved?
I did.
Second.
Motion that the Budget Committee join in the conversation with us.
Okay. And who seconded it?
Brian.
Did you get that, Jody?
Yeah, it was a motion by Russ and a second by Brian.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
We didn't, we did not correct our motion to include Crescent Beach. Do we need to do that?
We will. Before we vote Kathy, we will.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought we would do after. Okay, perfect.
The reason for this joint meeting is to get a roll call vote for both, but I think we need to talk about the projects itself.
Yes.
4.5 million.
So, Mr. Chairman, maybe I can kick it off for the public and for the board. This is an infrastructure bond that we are proposing tonight to go on to the July 15th, 14th town meeting ballot. The deadline for placing articles on that town meeting is this Friday. And so we are moving quickly to do that primarily because of a number of issues that have risen since we last looked at the town meeting booklet. We've had a structural engineer through our Public Works Department, Carol. And is Carol on?
I am, John.
Yeah. We've hired a Mr. Jim Hall who is with DuBois and King Engineering, and he has looked at the other seawalls other than Crescent Beach that are in a situation where the structure is at question. One is the Casino Square seawall next to the hotels and the other one is down by the Lobster Pound on Webb Hanat. That issue down there is the 2001 project, which is about 200 feet long. The sheet piling that was placed in that seawall project has failed, has eroded and water has seeped in underneath the concrete wall and inside the road. And that has to be addressed pretty quickly. The casino seawall is still being evaluated and that report should be coming out quickly.
The section of that seawall has, has started to lean, which indicates that there's a moment building behind that seawall.
The reason we're moving quickly on this is that there is a process that we can use to fund these projects through bond anticipation notes through the bond that will get the projects done and we can right-size the bond. So if all the projects come in at 3.2 million, that is what we're going to bond. There is the last seawall, Crescent Beach seawall, which is obligated under the FEMA funding for the March 2018 storm for over a million dollars. But we have to upfront that cost and then apply for its reimbursement to the town. That is a process that does take some time, but we need to get the project moving so that we meet the obligation timeframe of this November for the project to have started. The bridge is somewhat of a surprise down Drake's Island. The bridge is a 1931 structure. It is a wood structure that is approximately 22 feet long. It's timbers and other support structures are in question. Carol, did you want to take that on?
Yeah, there's an immediate life safety issue. The guard rail, bridge rail is embedded in air at this point. The soil around those posts is, is gone. The rail itself is rusted through and not attached to the post. And that's, that's a serious concern if someone get over there. And it could happen mainly because it's not that wide. So somebody trying to avoid a car or a truck could get up against that rail. And the thought of just doing the rail was discussed quite a bit last night with, with Jim Hall. And bottom line, it's not cost effective to do that. If you're going to close the road to do the rail, you might as well close the road and replace the structure so that you only inconvenience folks one time rather than numerous times. So the rail is a serious concern. The structure is as well. And, you know, it sounds like we're bringing an awful lot of stuff to you at once. But Wells is in the same situation of almost every other town, state and national infrastructure owners, that our infrastructure is old and tired and we have not done a good job of maintaining it nationally. So there, the price tag is come and due, unfortunately.
The, the other two projects is, one is the Swamp John Road, we can, total reconstruction project where drainage would be placed in the road. The road is built through the swamp. And so engineering has been done to develop a system of drainage and reconstruction improvements for the road, the entire length from Bragton down to Route 9. And that estimate is about a million dollars. The last project is the Pine Ledge Drive Robinson Road. That is a project that keeps on giving in the development of drainage and ways in which drainage can be put in and work appropriately for that subdivision. We looked at two possible solutions for that. One was to outlet the water into the woods beyond, down towards the Webb Hanat River. We found that it was almost impossible and very costly to place a drainage system in pure granite slab, is solid rock out there and to blast that amount would be very costly. The other solution we found was to acquire a property across the street of, on 9B and create a drainage swale for part of the water and then feed the rest of the water down a private road by the Ridge Top Lane. We have talked to the property owners down there and we have a system put in place where it will drain into a large pond and then eventually out back. That is still being engineered and that solution is just under a million dollars. Did I miss anything, Carol?
No, I think you got it, John. That's all of them. The numbers are pretty solid on Swamp John and Pine Ledge, a little, little sketchy, I guess I would say, on the other projects. We think we're in the right neighborhood, but once you start doing soil borings behind those seawalls, depending on what you find, the price could change. We tried to go as high as we thought those projects might go. My expectation is that the final price tag would come in lower.
Carol, can I ask a question? I just want to make sure. On the Crescent Beach one, we get a 75% to 25% match, correct?
Correct. Now.
So if it, if it happened to be more, would we still get the 25, 75?
Yes, because FEMA deemed it a large project and there's a distinction in FEMA, FEMA lingo. If it's a small project, you develop an estimate and that's what you get. Once you get over a million dollars, then they pay what it actually comes in at.
Okay.
Just for clarification, can you again tell us what the expiration date will be for legitimate claiming of those FEMA funds?
Yes, I applied for an extension last fall for a year. So they, the state granted that through November of this year. We can ask for an extension, but we have to in good faith show that we're making at least progress. Ideally, I would like to get it under construction in the fall.
John, I have a process question. Do Carol and Jim both work for the same company?
No.
Are you competing against each other?
No.
We, I don't know for sure whether we're getting different answers from you and Jim or not. I don't understand why two people who are expert in this are talking to us and then we have, do we have to decide on one over the other? I'm not, I'm not sure what's.
No. Carol's with us and, and.
Carol is our Public Works Director and Jim is a structural engineer.
Consulting.
With DuBois, DuBois and King.
Is DuBois and King, have anything to do with the work that's going to be done?
No.
No, he is. He's our consultant that we're paying to develop the reports.
Okay, thank you.
I got a question about the scheduling of all this, John or Carol. Carol, I'm glad you brought up, two of these projects are pretty well engineered and John, you brought this up as well. And the numbers are pretty good on Swamp John and the Pine Ledge and those, those two projects. The other projects, as Carol said, and I talked to her earlier today, those are pretty much just, you know, educated guesses.
Correct.
So what happens if, when we gets the real numbers here from Jim in a month or two and the cost for all these projects, these five or six projects exceeds 4.5? I guess what I'm leading up to is, have you people thought about prioritizing? What should be done first?
Jim.
And in my opinion, top on the list really has to be, or should be, I think, the Drake's Island Bridge. I mean, that's the sole access to Drake's Island. And God forbid if, if that, you know, if that collapsed on us. So my question, I guess, is what happens if, when all the numbers are pretty firm, it's, it's 5.3 million? We don't have the bond authorization to raise that money. What's going to be, what's the priority on the projects?
Not having Jim's report in hand, I don't know. For example, we did concrete cores on those seawalls and I don't know what that revealed. That may have great implications on the stability of those seawalls. So I'm a little reluctant to prioritize that. But Jim's going to give us that recommendation. I mean, he's, he's already, he and I stood on the Drake's Island Bridge and said, this is a life safety issue. I mean, it's that black and white. I think when it comes to the seawalls, we're just going to have to see what that report says in terms of priority, but we should get them all at least under design and fully evaluated for their remaining service life.
Carol, can I ask, one of the seawalls, it does not have any matching funds.
Correct.
That would not be a priority in my opinion then.
Yeah, FEMA, FEMA did not, when the coastal team was here, they did not determine that the storm damaged Casino Square or the other seawall. We're actually talking, Fire Chief and I are talking with, with MEMA about the short segment of wall across the Lobster Pound. They're trying to say that that was just normal wear and tear and I disagree. I think that storm removed all the fine materials behind those sheets and basically it's round rock loose in back of there. So all the wave action has just rattled those sheets with the rocks. Oh, that's a to be determined argument.
Okay.
Excuse me. Last night I was sort of under the impression, correct me if I'm wrong, that the 4.5 million was a ceiling amount that would more than absorb the highest possible estimate costs. So we were looking to put a ceiling, a reasonable ceiling on something that should be hopefully a bit less. If somebody can comment on that?
You're, you're absolutely correct. We tried to estimate these in the high neighborhood so that, you know, it's kind of like if you're, you're getting a bill from your auto mechanic and he first says it's going to be a hundred dollars, we didn't want to hand you a bill that said it's 150. So we think 4.5 is a reasonable number on the high end.
This, this is also about cash flow and our issues with COVID-19 going forward. We, we know that going forward, our cash flow and revenues will be not what we project going into FY 2021 and probably in the next year. What this project will do is to free up that cash flow, allow us to do these projects and at a very low interest rate that our bond broker envisions, the bands being one and a quarter to 2% and the bond itself being one and a half to two and a half percent. It allows the bands, the bond anticipation notes to be used up to three years and then bonding following the three years. So the first payment out on premium for the bonds would be, it could be as much as five to six years out. And so one of the major reasons I'm, I'm pushing this, besides the projects needing repair, is that if we're going to move forward in this environment, we cannot strip our reserve funds that is there to help buffer our, the, what, what I expect to be a rough time in the next couple of years. So it's, it's a little bit of a reverse curve, if, if you will. We're actually bonding to get these projects done and not impact our cash flow and reserve accounts.
Me and my mind.
I think, you know, when we were talking last night, in, in line of what you're saying, John, which I concur with very much though, is that we can tailor this along the way so that if we go to options on repairs, we go full bore, we end up going less, we need not take out the full four and a half million dollars. It allows us the option to tailor it to the events as they occur, looking at our cash flow and looking at our debt service.
Right.
A little over a month ago, we put in a budget. We had a list of projects, we had prices. We all agreed after great debate how it would be handled. So we are with a completely different list, about to put ourselves in significant debt. And while I recognize that some of these issues are urgent, I don't hear any compelling argument that is good enough to put us in debt to this extent. I'm not convinced that we've exhausted what we have available to us to use. We haven't prioritized the jobs in any way. We don't have bids, we don't have contracts, but we're going for four and a half million dollars, not even knowing how much we need. No.
Can I, can I say something, John? Can I, can I address that a little bit? Okay, thank you. I agree. When I first heard this, you know, I knew there was the Pine Ledge, we were going with that and we were definitely going to do. And we were definitely going to do the Swamp John Road. Those were the two things that I knew we were going to move forward on. And the Swamp John Road, we did have some funds in some reserve accounts that we were going to use that to help pay for that. Meanwhile, COVID hit us. So what's happening is that in the next couple of years, because of the impact on people paying taxes, the impact on the interest rates, the things that are going on, we're not going to have as free of an ability to pay in the next couple of years that we thought we were going to have. So, so we were looking at, you know, do we want to spend our reserve account when we maybe need that money in our reserves to pay for some of the things that are going to be coming up in the next couple of years? In fact, it's just dealing with our operations. And then, so that was one of the reasons this bond would help us not have to use our reserve accounts for the Swamp John Road. Then we got the Drake's Island Bridge thing, which is a priority. We did not know that was going to be that bad. And then we have the Crescent Beach and the beaches. So in the next few years, these would normally be projects, normally be projects that we would look at doing, just the way you're saying, and going in the next few years and being able to pay for it and put it on, putting on the agendas, you know, putting in capital improvements, whatever you're going to do. But you would have a better way of planning it. Unfortunately, that's not going to be able to be doing something that we do in the next couple of years because we're going to be dealing with trying to come back online with all the things that, that they, the shutdowns in businesses and that, and the impact on our, our people paying taxes that's going to occur. So we need to get those projects done. It doesn't look like we're going to be able to do it the normal way with doing use some of the reserve counts. This bond will allow us to keep our infrastructure safe and still allow us to be able to deal with the shortfalls and the things that are going to be coming up in our, in our reserve accounts. That's why, I mean, not, believe me, I'm not for putting ourselves in debt. But in this particular case, it's the best scenario to get done what we need to get done in the next few years. That's just my opinion.
In response to that, we're going to be paying interest only $90,000 a year on this bond issue. That's the projection. When this hits and we have to start paying the premium, I'm assuming the principal as well, is the same timeframe and we're going to be having a full valuation done over for the whole town. Taxes will go up and up. And this is on top of the safety building. I mean, we are hitting it harder and harder every time. And we're always going back to the same place for the money. Now, what this does to the tax rate is significant and it's going to hurt a lot of people. Now, maybe we don't do four and a half million, but the fact is, is we're asking everybody to trust us to do this. And we don't even have our tax rate. We don't even have bids. A month ago, we didn't even know we had these issues. These are things that we really, it's our responsibility. We're paying with other people's money.
But, but I guess I'm not understanding, this is going to be a bond issue that every voter can vote on.
Yeah.
Down. I don't want you to vote it down. You can vote it down if you want. That's fine. All we're doing is putting this forth. I hope they don't because I'm telling you right now, the Drake's Island one has to be done. We just heard it's a safety issue. Swamp John to me has to be done. It's a safety issue too. Those people have been putting up with, with garbage now for many times.
I love them.
Having lived on, can I finish, please?
Please.
I've lived on Wells Beach. I, I hope there's not a hurricane this, this summer. Because if those two seawalls collapse, there's going to be a lot of damage down there. Cause I've seen those seawalls collapse before in 1978. And you know how much money we had to spend back then to fix those beaches back up? You don't want to go there. And I'm, I, I think it's, it, look, the voters are going to decide this, not us. We're putting it forth. I think we're doing a responsible thing. The interest rates are roll right now. I'm hoping, you know, in the future that the federal government comes up with a great infrastructure plan that we can apply for funds to, to, to fix our infrastructure. I think that's a plan that's going out there. And that's how you rebuild a country. It's been proven through infrastructure. I just think this is, you know, it's the voters are going to decide it.
Good point.
I think for, for the record, I believe our interest rate on this here is one and a quarter percent. And we have the flexibility with, with this bond monies that with reimbursement from FEMA, with getting harder, harder numbers as we move forward, I'm, I'm very hopeful that we don't have to bond for the 4.5. And putting this forward at 4.5, that's a cap. There can't be, there can't be any more after we vote on this tonight.
Right.
And we all know it would be prudent upon us to be looking at our budget. We've been looking at it as a board since 19 kicked in. I'm sure Jody has a few concerns. Think that we've been as frugal as we've been and that we've had 65 or 70 days of cash flow. If we hadn't been as conservative through the course of time that we've been, we'd be in much worse shape. But I wholeheartedly support a, a $4.5 million bond. The people are going to vote on this, whether it's passed or not, is up to the voters. This is a good plan and I can't stress that enough.
Couple of questions, please.
Sure.
In particular, Carol, when they take a bridge out, there's got to be some means for the public to go back and forth. Are those figured into the costs that you have developed?
Yes, they are. Drake's Island has got about five years of remaining life structurally. The guard railway or bridge rail right now is used up. What, the expectation that I have in my mind, and again, we're a long way from having it designed, is that the timber structure would come out and you put a precast structure in there. It's a technique called rapid bridge construction that originated actually in Massachusetts. New Hampshire is doing it. We probably have to stage police and fire on the other side of the bridge, close it maybe overnight, drop in the precast, backfill it and open it up. Again, that's yet to be determined, but that's a pretty common way to do it nowadays.
Okay. Second question, on the bond, is there a chance, let's say that things go right instead of going wrong, is there a chance to prepay the bond?
No, not, not on these. We, we, like on the public safety complex, that cannot be prepaid.
Okay. And I don't want to lose the discussion that you just had about the seawalls. That one across the lobster pound might be only 200 feet long. But if it goes, it's going to take a significant amount of real estate in Webb Hanett Road with it.
Ms. Chairman, I, I haven't done this sort of Zoom public hearing with all these players before. And we, we got a lot of players here, but the general public has a right to ask questions too.
Is Brittany on?
I'm here.
Do you have questions pertaining to this particular subject that you, people need to have now?
Yes, we do.
Go ahead.
Couple of questions on this topic. What is the high level split of dollars across the projects?
I saw that question from John and I'm not exactly sure what he means with a high level split. I'm not positive what he, what he means about that. So maybe he could rephrase that and send it in. And his other question was closing Drake's Island Bridge to complete the repair. We can't do half and half, which is the kind of standard construction. It's going to have to be a rapid bridge construction technique. I hope that answers John's questions.
I think what he means is the, the high level split between the, the six projects that we have. So I think it would be Swamp John for a million, Pine Ledge and Robinson Road for a million, Drake's Island Bridge for 500,000, and then the three seawalls for 2 million. I, I think that's.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Those are the dollar figures, if that's his question.
Yeah.
Next question was where can the ordinance be found?
Ordinance, if you go to the website, to Selectman's page, to, on the right-hand side are the public hearings that we're doing tonight.
Next question, do voters have a final say on passage of this spending?
Yes.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Next question, is there any money in the Beach Enterprise Fund? Maybe consider using this to fund the Crescent Beach seawall repair.
There isn't sufficient funds there. There's about 300,000, I, I think at this time. And that will diminish quickly as we go into the summer before it starts building up from beach passes that are bought and the meters. But this will be a unusual summer, I'm, I'm sure.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we already projected to lose 25,000 just in this year, right? At the Beach Enterprise Fund from the.
Yes.
That, that will definitely change given the current climate, the economy.
One last question that came in, it's sort of related. How come we no longer have no littering signs along our roads? A few people were asking that.
It's not, it's not germane to this public hearing. We'll certainly take that up. You know, at the open to the public session of our meeting.
Okay, that was everything. I'll save that question for open to the public.
I would, I would like to say one other thing on this is that Carol, I'd like you to keep on because it's an absolute fact that the Casino Square seawall was damaged by storm. I mean, I've been down there, you know, many, that, that's storm damage. That, that is wiped away from underneath the constant wave surface going underneath that wall. I'm assuming when you said the rocks, that is from storms. That we, I think we should push that with FEMA that that's, that's something we should get FEMA to pay. Because I'm telling you, that is definitely storm damage. There's no way that, the way that wall is set with those rocks in front of it and everything like that, that's been from constant pounding by waves. We've had, you know, over the last two or three years, we've had some unreal wave action right there. And from that point, from the Casino Square all the way down to the, the Wells Beach Lobster Pound, that area is constantly under storm poundage. You know, the rest of the beach is really not that bad when it's big ocean storms. But from that point on, it's, it's constant wave action hitting those seawalls. That's damaging those walls. That's storm damage. That's not, that, that is.
And that's the argument I made to FEMA, but that they're tying it to the specific March two years ago storms. Remember the three-day storm? And they are saying that that's normal. Those other cumulative storms are normal wear and tear. And it was a hard sell to get them to agree to any of the seawalls. Luckily, we had a strong advocate with our liaisons to FEMA, or I think we would have been in worse shape. The only thing they would give us at Casino Square was the fence. And that was a, that was a hard thing to do. But that fence, those rocks went up and went through that fence in that March storm. So they did give us that.
Mr. Chairman, there's one more question that just came in. Will the Drake's Island Bridge be widened to include a pedestrian lane and bicycle lane?
That gets a little bit into the permitting issues. I mean, there's a lot of people that walk there. There's no question about that. But whether we could obtain a permit for a widened structure, I'm not sure. Maybe if you can deliver it off to the side somehow. But then again, you're adding cost. So I think that's a, we have to think about it, see if we can design it, see if we can incorporate it.
Any other questions or comments from the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, Carol, your point that you were just making about the fence on Casino Square, that seems like an argument for us that the storm did damage the actual wall itself. If it was able to do damage to a fence that was, you know, higher up than the wall, it was definitely eroding underneath. You, you would think they would be able to realize that that argument, I mean, they just argued for us in that.
I know. It was, believe it or not, it was a real argument to get even the fence through. And we had to have pictures of the fact that benches were destroyed behind it. So, I don't know. They were, they came in like they were, you know, again, we're government, we're here to help you. But it didn't come out that way in the end.
Nothing else from the board? Ron, do you have anything else from the Budget Committee?
Anybody else?
Then we have a motion in a second. Kathy, do you want to amend your motion?
Yes, I do. I want to amend the motion to include adding H in the definition on 14-1.
Second. With that addendum, all in favor from the Board of Selectmen?
Aye.
Aye. That's five, five zero vote on that. Ron? Ron, you're unmuted.
Oh, sorry, I'm muted. Okay.
There you go.
No, yeah, thank you. No further discussion from the Budget Committee. We probably should do a roll call unless, so Marissa?
No.
No? Okay. Brian?
Yes.
Yes. Russ?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Jim?
Against my better judgment, yes.
I don't, do we have a vote for that one? No, Jake. Bill?
Yes.
Okay, let me see who else is on here. I'm going, do we have anybody else on there here? Oh, Anna, I'm sorry. Thank you. Anna?
Yeah.
And is that, I'm looking at the boxes, so. Is that everybody? Jody, is there anybody I'm missing?
That's all I see.
Eke up forever, hold your peace. All right, now I say yes. Okay.
Kyle, procedural question. Did you have to close the public meeting before you voted?
When we, the motion would close the public and move the motion.
To thank the Budget Committee for not just tonight, but last night.
Last night, yeah.
Again, we apologize for the lateness of some of these projects, but that's when we found out about them. And we have a 60-day time label, time commitment before the July 14th vote, so.
Yeah.
We don't have any more surprises coming at us because we certainly don't.
I don't plan on surprising you anymore, but thank you all for that vote. I will sleep much better tonight knowing we can move some of these critical projects forward.
Yeah, let's, let's keep the Drake's Island Bridge on the front burner.
On the front, I agree on the front.
That's, that's critical.
Yep, absolutely.
All right, thank you, the Committee. We'll move on next then.
Thank you.
Chris Baez, do you want to step for a second, get the planning board lined up here for us?
Yep, absolutely. Budget Committee, if you guys can just kill your feed, thank you.
Great. Our next joint public hearing is with the Planning Board on amendment to Chapter 145 Land Use Ordinance to extend the occupancy time limits on certain seasonal lodgings to compensate for the time lost as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. John, you want to cue this?
Yes, as, as we've gone through these special meetings since March 17th, as the, as the COVID-19 issues have arisen, it's been very apparent that it's taken a hardship out of the seasonal people from letting them come up and utilize their facilities up here. And the board felt that there might be a way through amending Chapter 145 to allow for a one-year grace period of when people might be able to stay later in the fall and reopen earlier in the spring. So we asked our town attorney to work with our town planner, Mike Livingston. And they, they came up with the amendment that is on the table tonight.
Can I?
So John, this is Brian. As a member of the Planning Board, I haven't seen any of this information.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything either. In fact, I didn't even know we were meeting tonight. I didn't get a notification. I mean, I'm here because of Budget Committee, but I'm also on the Planning Board. So a little surprised.
Um, I did, this is Mike, the town planner. I did send out an email to all your email addresses last week. And I attached the public notification and the draft language for the ordinance. I was using your town email. I was using your town email addresses that we have on file. So maybe they didn't get to you for that reason?
I did.
I didn't see it. I don't check that email address at all.
I, I saw it. It's, it's basically just as what they said. It's, it's pretty short and sweet that they want to extend this for this next year. And I, I didn't think that it would be much of an issue myself, but I'll let someone else discuss it. Go ahead, Mike.
So Chuck, what are the dates that they want to extend it to? I guess would be helpful, just helpful is to extend it and then open when?
I don't have it in front of me in print right now. But I believe it's till, is it not November 15th, Mike?
Actually, in the proposed ordinance, no dates have been set yet. I think that was to come out of this public hearing.
Right, we're filling in the dates tonight.
Because most of those aren't going to be able to be open as far as water goes much after November 15th, they'll freeze.
I would like to kind of, we haven't made a motion, but I'd like to say that personally, I think to try to help these people out, it's, to me, it's April, whatever the date you want to put in April, forget the November date, but let's say it's April 15th that we let them open up. And I'll be honest with you, I am now, I would like to say that's a permanent thing rather than a one-time thing. And, and here's, here's my reason behind it. One is that two weeks would not only help our, these people who are being not allowed to come right now because of our rules here in the state, but it would also help in future years. Look, it's April vacation, most of the time around that 15th, whatever date you want to put on that, that's, that's usually Massachusetts and Maine's April vacation. And then the next week is New Hampshire, I think, or something like that. It would give our restaurants even more business. If people could come up, why not promote business and help them out too? I mean, what's, that two weeks, is it really going to kill us? If you do it all the time from now on and not use the November, because I don't think the November works for anyone, because I, pipes would freeze and things like that in those So if we just did it for permanently from April on as a gesture of, of, you know, goodwill or whatever you want to say to help these people out, but it would also benefit our restaurants, in my opinion, and our businesses, all our businesses, so retail or
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, isn't it most of those April 15th to like Columbus Weekend? Isn't it October 15th?
Yep. Currently, they're all set by ordinance of opening May 1st and closing November 1st.
Okay, because the water is closed until, isn't the water off, Mike, until April 30th, it said? Right now?
Yeah, the, the water district does turn on their water earlier than that, but by ordinance, they can't be occupied until May 1st.
Okay, so the water would be turned on or?
Well, it can be, Kathy.
Oh, can be, okay, that's what I'm asking.
Without, without danger of freezing, that's, that's the issue. So if, if we did do April 15th, I think that would be a very acceptable date. And I agree with them. I mean, you have school vacations, and that's when people come up and open these places up.
I'd like to make a point if I could. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
One thing is, I think this would be a great idea because of the, a lot of people have suffered in the community, not only the people that have saved, like the cottages, but a lot of the hourly workers, the people that might work at Rennie's, the people that might have restaurants. And these people contribute a lot of money to the economy. And I think it would help a lot of people if we extended this. And as Brian was talking about, that it would become, you know, permanent, because I think a lot of people could use the economic, you know, impact of having them here longer, you know, and if possible, even this season.
So I want to make it clear, we're talking about in the spring and not touching the November one, because it's
I just don't think November works for that.
It doesn't, I agree, I don't think it works, so.
Most people, people are families, and they're either gone to Florida or the kids are in school. So it's, it's the early part of the year is what you need to be concerned with.
Well, I have no problem, because then again, I still make the same argument that it would be helpful to the local businesses and people that they employ. And I think it would be a good thing, especially given what's happened this year.
I would, I would just ask, informational, does anybody know why it was set at May 1st? Maybe Mike does, or, or John, or was there any hard pressed reason why those?
Because most of them were, quote unquote, seasonal condo cottages.
Right.
That were, had to keep people out of them during the school year, sort of, and not infiltrate our school systems with residents in those places. So that's why they were a seasonal unit.
It was also because six months in a day gives you residency here.
Ah, okay, yeah.
See, they, they can own those, but can't vote in this town.
Right.
Okay, but if they lived there, and they, as Kathy said, over six months, they could be a voting citizen.
Okay.
So we might, I am, I know someone, I did see someone request that we, instead of doing two weeks in the spring and two weeks in the fall, why don't we just do two years for two weeks in the spring? Do you see what I'm, two weeks in that?
I would just do it from now on.
As long as, I think you've got to really look at that six month in a day thing, just in case. I, I don't know.
Want to be, you want to be careful of that part of it.
Absolutely. I mean, that's, these places were allowed to be built under those guidelines to protect, you know, density zoning issues that we wouldn't let anybody else get away with. So we have to be careful. This is the only reason.
So it's six months in a day? You said that they, they, they become a permanent resident?
That's what they, Leah, what, you're the one that might notice.
She's having trouble with her internet.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I think residency is not that specific. It's not just six months in a day. Like, there, there are a whole laundry list of things that are calculated as to how you become a resident. You know, like where you vote, where you register your car, where you say reside for income tax purposes. It's not just next, necessarily that mathematical precision.
Is that only for Maine? Because I know in Florida, we, you know, we have to sign off that we're not there for six, we can't, six months if we have a motorhome down there. We rent the lot for a year, but our motorhome is down there, and we have to sign off that we're not going to be there. So is that just a state by state thing?
Could very well be. The definition of residency, at least in Maine statutory. The IRS rules have different ones, so it is very much a piecemeal determining.
But I, I think originally that was the reason why it was six months, you know.
Can I make, can I make a recommendation that we find out what is a resident of Maine for the purposes of this?
Yeah, it's already May 12th, so we don't really need to rush into making the change to April 15th right now. Right. Let me find out.
We don't, we could, we could table it for two weeks, I mean.
Yeah, just to find that out.
Table this until the end of the year. We don't need to know that part of it.
Oh.
Till we get the definitives as to what constitutes the opening of how many days someone can be in a residence.
No.
I don't want to go, I don't want the end of the year. I want people to go right.
Can I just jump in for a sec here? Can people hear me?
Sure.
Go ahead, Leah. Go ahead, Leah.
I think what Leah's going to say is this has to go to town meeting. And if you want to do it, you got to do it tonight. Or postpone it until the November elections.
Well, you could, because these are going to open up as soon as we release the people to be able to come into them this year. The question is next year, am I correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's next year. We've already gone by the April date.
Right, so we could do this at the November meeting.
Right.
Yeah, we need the information. Like I said, I'm not, you know, I agree, Tim, that that'd be great. I just want to make sure, like I said, that the
No, I, I agree with Tim as well, but I don't think we need to jump into it now, because once they're open the first of June, or whenever we allow them to open, they're here. It's when can they come back next year?
Right.
Yeah, I think we need a little bit more discussion of this without jumping into it, making a permanent decision.
I agree, Bob.
Would it be possible for Leah to put something in writing then for us as to what constitutes a resident within the next couple of months?
I'm happy to do that, but I'm not quite sure. I think we, and I really am sorry, I was, I, my service is terrible. I didn't hear a lot of the discussions. But as far as what the legal definition of residency is for Maine, that's not necessarily the same thing as land use planning, right? And so I know that while residency was one of the things that would, went into the decision, decision to limit the dates, I think other things also, like density that Mike was talking about. So again, I'm more than happy to put that memo together, but I'm not quite sure it's going to help with the land use planning aspects of that.
Or, I understand that, but I'm, I'm just trying to understand, you know, if, you know, what becomes a resident if someone's using the cottages versus a non-resident? That's, that's the only, I'm confused on that issue.
I, I think what we, what we should probably do at this point in time, there's a definitive reason why, because of the density and building these things, I think the message really needs to be that we're willing to do something to offset because of COVID-19 this year, allowing folks in. Point in time, it's the governor's actions that supersede whatever the Board of Selectmen are going to do. And I think we have to be very careful. I'm not opposed to opening things early or letting them stay a little bit later, but I think the information flow needs to, we can't vote on this without having more definitive information. So I recommend we table this. The message is that we want to do something to help out the seasonal folks that haven't been able to come here now. Let's table this for now, get some information, take it up even as soon as next week or the week after.
I just ask a quick question on that, though. What if we, what if we, if we did it for next year as a good will gesture, right now, tonight, April 15th of next year, you can come, and then we're going to look into keeping it permanent? We'll look into this idea of keeping that a permanent. But right now, for, to try to help these people and show it's not us versus them, which I'm not really seeing right now on, on the comments. But if it's not us versus them, that we're trying to give you something. So we give them April 15th just for next year. We were, that's what we were meeting for anyway. I just threw out the idea of doing it permanently. And then we meet again later on at some other date to discuss how we could do this permanently, if we want to do it permanent.
I think it's a great idea. I totally support that, Tim, because we, if we do it temporarily, then we're not going to have the issue, you know, and we can always find out the answers and whatever. And, and I don't agree that the discussion was us against them during this whole time.
No, you're not, not us, not this group. I meant the comments coming in from
Oh, oh.
Not, not, not us, not, I don't.
You know, we have a lot of good people that come here that I
Oh, I, that, you took it wrong.
Yeah, no, no, it's okay.
What we're doing tonight is to amend Chapter 145. 145 is one that requires both Planning Board and, and Board of Selectmen discussion, public hearing, and moving it on to the town meeting for a vote on this on either July 14th or the November ballot.
So if, if I, if I were to make a motion that said that we fill in the date for the 15th of April, that it would open for next year and leave the November one, the way, just, that's the only change we're going to make, and it would be a temporary extension for 2021?
Can I just ask for some clarification? I'm looking at the actual draft ordinance itself. And the problem is that we can't just say April 15th, because there are different categories of uses that have different dates. For example, housekeeping cottages, they're open between January 10th. Sorry, they have to be closed between January 10th and April 1st. Seasonal cottages are a little bit different, and the tent and RV parks are a little different. So I would ask you to look at those exact provisions and give a little bit more specificity as to the dates, because they're different.
This can still go on the November ballots. We don't have to
Let's put it on the November ballot and make it clearer than what this
We all want to do something to help the folks, so let's get it right for everybody.
Yep.
I, I would put the word out there, Tim, or the public, to let them know that, yes, we are going to do something for opening next year. We just don't know how we're going to word it yet. But by the time it arrives next year, we will have made decisions to do this.
So do we need a motion to table this for tonight, or what? Just anything?
The, the only question I have for Leah, I know this is a joint public hearing between the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen. Do we need to open this to the public, or can we just table it now? I want to make sure we're okay with what we do.
I do believe it is a public hearing, so you want to hear from the public. I understand that you'll be tabling it, but tabling assumes that you're going to reactivate it. Would be happy, helpful to hear people's comments, I think.
Yes.
Brittany, do you have some questions?
Yeah, a lot of comments, not too many questions. One question here is how will we be voting on this?
Well, if we're going to
It will be a town, be a warrant article at town meeting.
Okay. Again, there weren't many questions, just a lot of chatter. I'm just doing one final look through. It was really the only. I think that's the only question on this.
I saw one through, said, isn't it still up to park owners as to when they open and close? And I assume the answer would be yes for the, for the parks. I mean, they kind of own the property, so I think that's up to them.
I don't, I don't think this, we eventually decide on this. It's not, it's not forcing them to do it, it's giving them the option. Right. To open a little early. If, if a park, if a campground says, we're still not open until May 15th, okay, that, we just gave you the right to do it if, if, if you want to. That's up to the owner of that park, in my mind.
It's entirely up to the park owner. Exactly. The only stipulation that the town has is in the condo cottages and resort, things of that nature. That's where we have the stipulation. But the individual campgrounds can do anything they want, unless we have what we have now, the moratorium to stop it.
I, I just want to make sure, for clarification purposes, in the ordinance, it does have, for tent and recreational vehicle parks, there's also a limitation that they can only be open between the 15th and the 31st. So I, I just want to be clear that those, those three types of housekeeping cottages, seasonal cottages, and tent and recreational vehicle parks have temporal limitations on when they can operate. And that's what we're going to be looking at.
And if you're campground owner, you wouldn't turn your water on before April 15th, because you apt to have all your pipes freeze.
And it's also what the ordinance requires.
Correct.
So Mike Livingston, I guess this would come back on you to have all this information for us within the next week or two, so we can have all the information for actual dates of opening and closing. Want to take on just to helping people for next year?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. I can work with Leah, the town attorney, and we can refine that language and get those dates plugged in.
That would be great.
For the, for the November election, which we need by August, the last part of August.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah, but let's try to get it done sooner than, you know, let's not wait until it gets close to August. I think these people need some good news soon, so I think they were hoping for some good news tonight. So let's try to get this done as soon as possible.
I think we just need to put the word out there that we are going to make it accessible to them next spring. We just don't know the exact date and what terminology is going to work.
Absolutely.
I'm also sure, pretty sure they need the budget. You know, I mean, they, each one of these parks needs to figure out their budget for the, you know, I mean, all that stuff. So it's quicker the better for, I think.
Yeah, right. We can be ready ahead of time of November, it's fine.
So if there's no other questions? So if there's no other questions, Kathy, I'll take a motion to table and we'll take this up as soon as we get the information from Mike and Leah.
I make a motion to table this motion, this item.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you. Thank you to the planning board for joining us.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
It's a good message for all the folks that are, that are watching at home that we're doing what we can, we can. So thanks for your patience.
Thank you, Carl. Thank you, everyone.
All right. Thank you. Stay safe.
Bye now.
See ya.
Our next public hearing now is a hearing on ordinance to amend chapter 115 licensing and permits of the code of the town of Wells to require licensing of short-term rentals. A lot of chatter about this particular issue. And there's been some conversations. Tim, do you want to bring something up?
Yeah, I, I'd like to, there's a lot of discussion. There's a lot of things going on with this. I don't feel like I'm close to knowing what I'd like to do with this, even if we, we could spend three hours on this tonight and I still don't know that, what, how I'd feel. I see both sides of this story. I, I would like to table this. I would also like to say as one person, I would love us to see, bring in the lodging committee that we have in this town into this to, to discuss it with, and bring in some, some of the, you know, whether Summer Village, what are those, the three season cottage people? Because I think about half of them rent, you know, in some of those parks. And then bring in like, you know, a couple of people that have just single Airbnb homes or whatever they're doing. Along with like a Katie Kelly from Lafayette or someone, the lodging committee with a few additions to it. And table this for now because I just, I, I've seen the, the emails going back and forth and I don't feel like, I, I would not want to vote on this tonight.
Well, I gotta, I gotta tell you too, I think, I read through it and I think this, this particular ordinance as written is a little heavy-handed.
Thank you. I agree.
I did too. I, that's why I want to look at it more. So I, yeah.
Specifically, one thing that came through was the, the minimum of three days needed to rent. It just seemed way, way overboard.
Look at the record keeping. I mean, you'd have to hire a property manager and that just doesn't seem reasonable to me. Some of these folks are just doing it so they have income coming in so they can own the place. You know what I mean? It's, it's their residence for all intents, residence for all intents and purposes.
I, and honestly, with everything that's going on, I, I know we want to cover this. I know eventually we will. But I think in this environment right now, it's just, I, I don't, I would want to table it. I wouldn't want to vote on this. And I agree with the three day minimum.
I like the idea of getting a committee in on it too and having some people. Well, it just, I, I read one concern was that the, you know, we're not picking anybody here. I'd get, but that the hotel owners were having unfair say or whatever. I think bring some people in, like you said, from places like Summer Village and, and some Airbnbs. I think that'd be great.
I think the individual, like if you found a couple of people that maybe are just, I own a beach house. Let's say, and I, I, I don't, but I mean, I do own a beach, I don't rent it, you know, but that single person too, instead of somebody that's owned seven beach houses and this is their business. You know, having people involved in it. So everybody has a say in this, like we did with the parking committee. To me, it's exactly the same thing. And I just think there's too much confusion on this. I, I, I agree. I hate that three-day thing. I, because when we use it, if we would go somewhere like, and we're traveling around the country. We'd use the thing for one day and then move on to the next state or whatever, you know what I mean? And, and see the next thing. It, it just, it, it limits us too much. I, I would like to see it looked at a lot more closely.
Yeah. And actually, I think, I think it'd be nice too, if, I don't know if anybody was willing, but somebody that, that may be outside the fold. I, I had a guy contact me today. They, they've had the house for a while and he was concerned that he wouldn't have a voice because he was from Massachusetts and he wasn't having residency up here. Still owns property here, but I, I think it'd be unfair to leave folks like that out as well if we knew that there was, there was some folks.
My other thing is if we moved on this like right, right away, these people are already going to struggle renting.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. This is not the environment.
I don't want to add to it this second. I just.
Right. No.
It, it's, it certainly is something that has been brewing for a couple of years. This is more of a life safety thing, making sure people that are coming in protected, that there's, there's liability issues that need to be looked at, but not doing anything with this tonight. Committee, getting the property on it and then having it brought back before the full board for recognition.
And in all honesty, and I, I understand, you know, that we, there are things we want to make, there are safety things, but it, you know, people really need to do their homework. This is for, I mean, when they go out and they choose to go someplace, they're making hopefully an intelligent decision to do something and check the background. What, I mean, they need to be doing their own research and finding out what's safe and what isn't when they go someplace. I mean, we are not, we shouldn't be expecting to make every single person absolutely safe in everything. They need to make their own responsibility there.
So Carl or John, what's needed to be done to reenact or revamp the lodging committee? I think I'm the liaison to it, but I know it's a bit defunct right now. So what do we need to do going forward in order to get this back up and get some, some revised members of the board? So that way we can get a more diverse viewpoint now that we're looking at, you know, expanded lodging.
Well, just table, table this for tonight and the town manager to reconvene the lodging committee with some new members on it.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think we gotta wait until they, they get up here.
Right. And, and then give, and, and let them report back to us on what they, you know, at a certain date and time. It's when you get, tell us when they get together.
We can reach out and figure out who, who we, who you want to be on, on the committee in addition to those that are already on the committee.
Well, we want representation like we had for the parking lot committee. So I think we could probably just put out via, you know, through Brittany. Looking for people of an interest to surf and do it during the summer when people are here, not usually do in the winter time off-season.
Right. So they'll, yeah, that allows us to get somebody, the, the non-residents on there.
Yeah, we should have a cross-section of everyone that's involved.
Okay, so.
So that being said, I'll take a motion to table.
I make a motion that we table this item.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you.
I'm just happy I wasn't liaison. I was scared I was. I forgot about that.
Well, you, you can be put on that too.
No, no, I, I was, I was like scared to death. Like, is that one of my committees?
I don't know.
Well, our next public hearing is Christopher Farley, 16 Pine Led Drive Wells, application for a solid waste disposal license. This is a new license from the public.
I vote that we close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Five zero. Thank you. Next, we're moving on to our COVID-19 update. John?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Update on the governor's orders. We, we see that she is moving closer to making decisions on the, the elections, the, and working on orders that will affect municipalities with regards to taxes and some other things. We were expecting this week for some of those orders. They're not, they're not there yet. She has, as of last Friday. As we know, worked towards open up, opening up the rural 12 counties in, in the state to different services that they can go and dine in and, and some other functions. She has kept closed York County and Cumberland County to all those services. And is looking to implement some relaxation probably in June. But I think the bigger question that she is tackling from everything I've read and listened to is on the quarantine issue. That is extremely confusing to people. And she modified it last week, which was basically those coming into the state would have to quarantine for 14 days. Or the length of their stay i- if less than 14 days. So no matter what, you're going to quarantine in a facility without exiting that facility for 14 days or the length of your visit. So I know people are working to figure out whether or not protocols could be put in place for testing people. Those things are at least probably a week to a month from now before we know. There has been a push in, in the community to provide outdoor dining. Unfortunately, with her orders of last Friday, York County and Cumberland County and the two others cannot do that. And so we, we will wait to see what she is going to do this coming week with, with orders.
Can I just ask a question on that? So, so I asked this last week and I must have missed. I, I thought we were going to do a workshop on this or something with, with board members, but at least now I know we have time, but next week I'd like to see it is that. I would really like to see us really, really work hard on, on no site review plan, no site plan, sorry, no site plans for these restaurants for this season. I would like to see if they want to put up a tent in their parking lot and have outdoor, when it's allowed, not, I don't mean tomorrow, when it's allowed. More outdoor dining than we've ever had. I would like every retail shop to be able to have whatever you can for sidewalk sales. I, I, you know, if it helps them do business and it helps keep people safe by having outdoor stuff, we should be promoting that immediate, as soon as it can, you know, I, I really think that's something that could help them in, in the long run. And I don't see any harm in it for one year, for one season. I just don't see the harm in it.
I would turn to Leah and Mike's not on this anymore, but I don't think he is. My, my guess is we have to figure out a way around chapter 145. And I, I'll let Leah maybe think through this with, with Mike to how you do that.
I mean, I, I can just tell you generally speaking, what the options are, just very briefly. Obviously, it would take some thinking and tinkering, but the fact is, as you well know, that when it comes to chapter 145, which is a land use ordinance, that may only be amended with the, you know, by the town meeting. Unless there's another provision that every, it has to be sort of an interpretation issue and the majorities of both the planning board and the CPA and the selectmen, not the CPA, the selectmen have to agree. So we know what the legal way to do this is. Town meeting has to approve changes. Now, that said, this could also be an enforcement issue, you know, as you also know, in order to enforce a land use violation, the code office has to send a notice of violation and then the board has to authorize a court action. So there's the ordinance itself and what it specifies. And then there's the enforcement procedure for violations. And so, you know, I, I could go into case law and I'm sure nobody wants to hear that right now, but you know, there is a relatively recent case that talks about how the board, you know, they, they still have essentially prosecutorial discretion around what violations will be enforced. And so, you know, this is probably another, as John said, a discussion for another day. But, you know, we could decide that an actual amendment or amendments to the ordinance are required. Or it could be simply a lack of enforcement, that this board makes a policy decision, you know, on certain issues, not to enforce certain things.
Leah, your question on that, if we do an informal change, like you were just mentioning, and, you know, there's a lack of enforcement this year and then the enforcement comes back next year. Does that then open us up to legal disputes because of consistency of the application of the law?
Well, as you know, there's a big difference between people raising a legal dispute and winning a legal dispute, right? And so when it comes to this particular issue, if you're talking about discriminatory enforcement, that kind of thing. Well, you know, this year you let so-and-so do it, so why aren't you letting me do it? That is a very difficult argument to prevail on. It's the same kind of argument if I said to Chief Putnam, if she pulled me over and I said, well, the guy next to me went faster. That's not a great argument. So selective enforcement doesn't win the day unless legally speaking, you can show that the reason for that discrimination was one of those reasons that we all know are unlawful because it's based on race or gender or, you know, the various enumerated grounds. So I don't think that goes too far.
All right. Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, Kathy, go ahead because I've, I've been speaking.
No, no, I'm, I'm just saying so we could say that we're, we're just suspending enforcement of outside business.
And it would have to be worded in a way that I would certainly help you because we want to make crystal clear that it's only with respect to certain things. And this is only within a very limited period of time, only based on, you know, the pandemic. Now, one other thing you got to think about is if an angry neighbor who was not pleased about your lack of enforcement, they could appeal that. You know, so, so again, I just want you to think about the constellations of issues that this would involve. Again, a conversation for another day, but, you know, it, it's, it, it could be A, change the ordinance or B, don't enforce it in very limited circumstances.
And then, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like the not enforcing it would be the quicker way to address it because we don't have a whole lot of time.
I, I think it would certainly be the less cumbersome one as far as town meeting goes. Policy-wise, whether you want to make a decision not to enforce your own ordinances is something I will leave to you. But, yeah.
I think not, not enforcement. I, I probably have a little bit of concern about that. I'd much rather have us go the executive order route, if that's the proper terminology, because of the pandemic. Relaxation of the rules for a short period of time, whether it's one season or something of the sort. But I, I don't necessarily agree with the lack of enforcement because I think we're, we're putting our police officers and code officers and whatnot in a, in a predicament for the future. Not, I'm not trying to go against helping out businesses in any way, shape or form that we can. I just want to make sure we do it the right way.
Just for comical purposes, though, didn't, when we, I don't think we're out of the, John's emergency, whatever we call John, making decisions like the emergency order. Couldn't he just make this an emergency order?
I would need to really look closely at the actual scope of the powers. It talks about, you know, movement of people and that kind of thing. But, you know, I, I gotta see, they're pretty broad powers. I'm not sure if they're that broad, but let me, let me defer till.
If, if the board would indulge us a week to come back with some recommendations.
Yeah, I mean, we can't do it till June 1st anyway, but I'm just, I, I just, I would like to, I.
Yeah.
I've noticed other towns doing it, like other towns are saying the same thing, you know, where they're looking at sidewalk sales being one way. To limit people going actually into the physical, especially some of these smaller places that, you know, they, they'd be hard placed. They have a six-foot. Now you give them a few spaces outside, they can have more people eating and, or, or shopping than they would. It also creates some work issues for them. I get it, but it, it would definitely help our businesses, I, I would think if we could.
Yeah.
To not choose to do it, you know?
Right.
Yeah, I'd like to try and make a decision on this next week. So that way they can have enough lead time to plan for something like this. Because this is going to be a whole change in operations for them if this is something that they're going to be able to do. It's going to be new to a lot of businesses.
Right. And June 1st is kind of quick.
It is.
All right. If.
So going, going forward with the report, we opened the beaches on Monday for passive walking, surfing, fishing. And basically it has played out pretty well. The weather is obviously helping with us. What is not helping is. What is not helping is the wildlife in the area of the Eastern Shore parking lot. The major walkway to the beach along the jetty is closed because of a piping plover nest and two eggs. The state came in and and closed that area. The issue with additional wildlife is next right away down is a den of foxes that two have shown that they've been they've been removed now, but they were rabid. And so that is closed for pedestrians to go down. The next one is also bird laden. And so we have to use right away 13 for people to go down. The extent of that unfortunately will be weeks. And one or two things can happen. One, the nest will come come to life with new siblings in it and they will, when they get to fly, they'll move. And we can reopen the pathway. If they don't hatch for a while, we're stuck with no access through there. So we'll we'll have to play it week by week and see how this plays out.
John, wait, I mean, I I've been down there yesterday and today and I so why can't they just walk on the jetty on the rocks because the nest is down away from that?
Yeah, that's very dangerous.
What's dangerous? Walk on the rocks?
Yeah, the type of people that go down there, the older people, the.
John, the older people don't walk on those. I mean, seriously, they're not gonna, I mean.
Well, how how else are they going to get down there?
Can people walk on the rocks is what I'm asking you.
I don't know if the police chief is on, but I don't think they can, quite honestly. I think it is dangerous to walk on.
People have always walked on the rocks. I mean, that.
They've been hurt too.
John, okay.
I believe I believe the plover people have chimed in and they did, it was mentioned that people were walking on the rocks. They were coming down off the rocks into the twine. I mean, we can't.
Then people, you gotta stop the people from coming off the twine, but I mean.
Well, I mean, you can't, it's very hard to police where it is. Unfortunately, it's like right, it couldn't be anymore in the middle of the trail.
Oh, no, I know, I know.
It couldn't be in a worse spot. And it's on the curve. I mean, I've I've got people down there 12 hours a day. Trying to keep people and we're still getting complaints of people going through, coming down in the twine, going up on the rocks, coming down in the twine. So it's and and it is, I understand what you're saying and about people on the rocks. Yes, people do go on the rocks. They shouldn't be, to be honest.
They've always gone on the rocks, Joanne. No one has ever said.
I get it.
Go on the rocks.
Well, we've had.
We've all had our families out there and. Yeah, I mean.
I guess.
I don't want to start thinking people cannot go on those rocks. That's not right.
Well, I guess that's up to the piping plover people and if they if they say no, which they have said in the email today, then I.
Oh, no, I I understand that part. I'm just saying.
Yeah, they're saying they're saying no. So that's, we're trying to keep people off them, that's all. I mean, and I'm not saying people aren't doing it. They are, you know, if you can get it in. Give an inch, take a mile, you know, that that that's how these people are, so.
They're regular people, Joanne. They're no bad, they're not bad people.
Oh, no, I'm not saying they're bad people at all, but.
You know, it, I know, it's just, it's just so frustrating.
It, I get it, but there is, we're not saying there's no access to the beaches. I guess that's what I'm saying. There is a way, there is a way to get on the beach. I mean, they're there to walk, walk up the road, get on the beach, I guess.
Our biggest parking lot is down there, you know?
But it's the same amount to walk out to the beach either either way, either way they go on. But and and again, it's it's up to the plover people that's, you know, I'm, this is in their hands. I, you know, John and I, John can tell you that when we were down there, we tried to maybe have a path for them on the side. They were, have nothing to do with it. So we tried. I think the ball's in their court, unfortunately.
Right. I mean, I am, I don't want to hurt any little birds, you know? But I can tell you that what really frustrates me is, again, we have the state that comes in and tells you what we can do on our own property. I know I've had a problem with that forever, you know, I, you know, it's just not right. And sooner or later, we've got to say, it's our, like, you know, get out. You know, they they shouldn't be allowed to come in and just close down an area. If they want to rope it off, that's fine, but they should ask us, you know, or tell us, but not tell us they're going to do it and that we can't go there. I I just think that is so unfortunate.
I I understand what you're saying. I mean, you you play the cards you don't.
Yeah, and we have a beach agreement that we signed that said we would work with them and comply with the federal and state laws.
What? When was this? I know, but.
Last year.
Yeah, we signed.
We signed it last year. We signed it last year.
Yeah, we.
Every three years we sign it. And that gives us the right to do certain things on on the beach. Unfortunately, the birds this year, I I think because of lack of human beings on the.
Exactly, that's what caused it.
Yeah.
Because we can't, you know, you just can't win, you know? You know, you start right, you close the beach to help the people, the birds move in, then you can't use the beach because the birds are there. You know, it's just, it's just such a vicious circle.
But I think the, I mean, I agree, I don't, I've always walked on the rocks my whole life, but.
Yes, exactly.
And people fish off them. So I think the, but on my other point would be that we we have signed this beach agreement. I mean, since I've been a selectman, I remember signing it and
Yeah.
One of the reasons I always say we have to sign it is because of the threat of if something were ever to happen to those, we've seen it, right, those birds, because of something we did, their threat is just, okay, then your beach is closed, that.
No, that's when you know, that that's when you know, you know, don't.
I believe in following what the what the rules are. I don't, I I guess we can make up our own rules, but I I just don't believe in that. I believe in, I believe in representative government, which we have.
I believe, right, exactly, but you know.
And the people are saying this. It's not just one group of people saying, it's not like three people have put this rule together. There's a group of them.
Right. I have no problem with the piping plovers, none. I don't mind protecting them. I don't mind doing that. But I do not like when the heavy hand of the state comes in and tells us we can't dredge, we can't do this, we can't do that. You know, and or we can't expand a parking lot where the kids are playing and you can't, you know, I mean, that's and I just, I find it very difficult and why they should be able to do that when it's our town. That's all I'm venting. I'm sorry.
Moving on, we're we're going to be opening town hall on May 18th. We're having reorientation for our staff on Friday. We have subscribed to a national appointment app application where you can now make appointments to come into town hall on from our website and from social media. Shortly, we hope to have a our town hall phone number with an extension where people can call for a an appointment. Why are we doing the appointments? Because we cannot have more than so many people in the town hall at one time from the public because of the distancing rules from the state. For example, in the town clerk's office, we can have one person in the code office, we can have one person in the transaction general office, we can have up to two or three. And and so it's going to be a slow process. We urge people to go onto our website under services and look at all the online ways you can transact your business with town. We will do what we can to help you over the phone to process whatever it is. We have a drop off box outside the central doors for tax payments or a drop off of building permits or different things like that. It's being heavily used right now and we're going to make make all of this work and proceed to provide the services to the public as best we can. The we talked about the businesses. And Brittany, any update on We Are Wells Fund?
Right now, we are at $5,692 raised. Nice.
Outstanding.
That's it, Mr. Chairman. Oh, also, I think Jody is still on.
I'm still here, yeah.
Yeah, Jody has done a great job in automating the beach sticker program. Did you want to talk about that, Jody?
Sure, because in the Facebook chat, there's actually some questions about that. Through today, the system went live last Monday. We have issued over 500 beach stickers through that online portal. So that has been very receptive. So we encourage people to use that portal. If they're having issues, there is a email that comes directly to certain staff here in the office to take care of beach sticker issues and we try and respond to them throughout the day on a quick manner. And then we will start issuing beach stickers by mail in the office starting next week when we do have staff back. But we would encourage anybody to currently do them online or by mail.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
John, some good news?
Good news, the Elks Club, we've been working with the Elks Club and they are decorating the veterans' graves from Memorial Day. We we have bought the flags and they have picked them up and they are in that process right now.
That's great news.
Yeah.
I I'd like to thank, real quick with my good news, I'd like to thank a lot of the businesses today. It was a sad day for one family in town that had to bury their daughter Frankie Hope today. May she rest in peace, but it was so nice to drive, if you drove down Route 1 today, everybody had signs up because you know, they they didn't, couldn't have a big funeral for everyone. They had a small one, but the businesses in town all put their business, the schools. And everybody put signs up, you know, just saying rest in peace Frankie, or it was her birthday today too. So it was just a very nice gesture on the town's part. It's 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 awesome to see us come together during these times. And and I want to thank the businesses that jumped on business and schools and and rec department. There was a lot of them. And then other people had signs on the roads and stuff like that. So it was just really nice to see, I think it gave the family a little good feeling for them. You know, he texted me today and said, thank you to the, make sure I thank the town. So you know, thanks to all the businesses that did that for us. So that was very nice. And I got to watch, I'm going to have Sean talk a little about project stimulus. That thing's going nuts right now and he he's in charge of it, so I'll let him do that part.
Yeah, we just, I think we just hit 1,000 people on our group, which is great. We have over 60 or 70 baskets now with about 30 to 40 businesses participating. For those of you that are not aware of what project stimulus is, it's a virtual basket raffle and live auction that Emily and I have started in order to raise funds for small businesses in our community that are struggling this time due to the the COVID-19 pandemic. So basically, these businesses are always the first ones to give back to our community when we need it. And now it's our turn to give back to them because they certainly need it in these times with all the restrictions surrounding and and the environment right now. They're really in desperate need of some help, a lot of these businesses. So it's it's very important that we get involved here and help them out, do the best that we can. So please, if you're not already a member of our page, join Project Stimulus Wells Maine. It's on Facebook. This week we'll be going live with our donation platform so you can start donating, buying basket raffle tickets and start getting more information. Every day we post in the morning and afternoon, another basket. We're getting tons and tons of businesses and community members donating a basket. The way it works, if a business donates a basket, it then enters them into to be a participating business that will then receive 100% of the proceeds that will be distributed amongst all the participating businesses. So business just has to donate one basket of a dollar value of their choosing and that will then get them a portion of the proceeds from this event. If anyone has any questions on it, you can feel free to reach out to me on Facebook or my email that's on the town website. I'd be happy to answer any questions or field any any phone calls. The contact information's out there, so just feel free to contact.
Great, Sean, great project. Anything else? To open to the public for the next 15 minutes, we'll take questions regarding anything. Brittany, I'm sure you have quite a few racked up at this point.
Yes, we do. Lots of different questions in lots of different categories. I will start with the COVID-19 related questions. First question, can we clarify that if someone is coming to Maine, they do not have to quarantine for 14 days if their length of stay is less than two weeks?
That is, that is correct. If they're here for three days, they have to quarantine for three days and go home.
Next question, can I come from out of state to pick up my boat at the harbor and leave without stopping or talking to anybody?
You broke up, but if I heard it right, can they come up and pick up their boat and go back home? Was that?
That's correct. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, yep, that's correct.
It's not essential. I I don't know where they're coming from. I'm not sure I want to know. But they're not supposed to.
There were multiple questions about when out of state visitors can come up and open their cottages.
Well, that's, there's two answers to that. If if they have a a non lodging house, they can come at the beginning of June and quarantine themselves and and open up. If it's lodging, again, it's June and they quarantine themselves for the amount of stay they're here for, up to 14 days.
Next question, will I be able to park my car at Wells Beach with mask plates on June 3rd and walk the beach?
I'm sorry, Brittany, I couldn't, what was that?
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can now.
Um, will I be able to park my car at Wells Beach with mask plates on June June 3rd and be able to walk the beach?
Yes, we will have our meter operations up as of Memorial Day weekend. And they they certainly can park and walk, walk the beach in June. But the question then comes if they're driving up from Massachusetts to go to the beach, they need to not, they need to quarantine. Like, I guess the answer is no, they can't do that. Would you agree, Leah?
Yes, I think is, you know, it just really depends on when they have arrived in Maine. If it's 14 days before June, you know, and and arguably shouldn't be here, yes. So you got to quarantine for 14 days regardless of when you enter at this point unless the governor lifts that and she has yet to do so.
I I guess the better question is, can day trippers come and go to the restaurants and so forth? Unfortunately, no. Until until things are lifted.
Excuse me. Next question, what are the different timeframes for opening between the RV parks and cottages that are in town regulations?
Do you want me to field that one, John?
Sure, it's not COVID-19 issues or just land use.
When you said the various dates of of when folks can come, I think we need to go back to the governor's order, I believe it's Governor's Order 34. What her definition of lodging is, and that includes RV parks specifically. And so if it is a kind of land use that is contemplated by the governor's order or the town of Wells as lodging, then they cannot come until June 1st. And under the governor's order, reopening plan, I should say. lodging is open to Maine residents as of June 1, or those out-of-state residents who have quarantined or completed their quarantine. So June 1 is, is when that is, you know, those lodgings can open to Maine residents. They don't have to quarantine there, but if you are coming from out of state, you do have to quarantine at this point.
All right.
Yeah, I would urge, I would urge people to go to the Maine CDC website. And midway down the page is a link to frequently asked questions. They do a good job in updating it every several days. That has like 28 pages of answers to questions very similar to this.
All right. Next question, per the state website, as of yesterday, outdoor fitness classes of less than 10 are kind of cut off there, but I'm assuming they are allowed, as well as allowing this, looking to open my yoga studio back up.
I believe that's for the 12 counties that can be open.
Yeah, not us.
It's not York or Cumberland County.
All right, next question, are the people from Maine that work out of state quarantining for 14 days after returning home from work?
I think that the answer to that question is if they're essential workers, essential workers aren't required to quarantine.
Next question, will vacationers be allowed to rent in Wells for the summer?
Absolutely. It's depending on what type of lodging they're looking at, or short-term rental. They can certainly rent their facilities as long as it complies with the governor's timeframe.
Next question, has the town informed all the seasonal cottage community property managers and offices about the change in the quarantine wording to 14 days for the duration of the state if less than 14 days?
We have talked to many managers, and I can't tell you how many people, hundreds of people, I've sent a little template I've put together too, which has that wording. So it's, I think the managers of those facilities need to look at the state of Maine website. It's really not up to us to do that.
Next question, how will day trippers be notified that they cannot come beyond the signs on the highway?
Well, you know, the problem, and I go back to Selectman Roach, Tim Roach, he is absolutely correct. If you're, you're in Massachusetts, you are locked down. There is no right for you to get in a car and, and take a day trip up here. You're violating the state of Massachusetts laws, or up to recently, the state of New York, or Connecticut, or Rhode Island, or Vermont. If you do come up, it's, it's, you know, there is nothing that we can do other than to suggest that you think twice about what you're doing.
Lots of questions on whether or not people need to quarantine again when re-entering Maine if they've already been in quarantine for weeks in their, you know, wherever they're from.
The answer is yes, they, because it's a state of Maine requirement. It's unfortunate if they quarantine in Massachusetts for 14 days and then get in the car and come up here for a two-week stay. They're, they're supposed to quarantine themselves up here.
Wait, I think she's saying if they go back and then come back again, right? Is that what they mean?
They're saying if they quarantine in their home state for four weeks and come here, why do they have to re-quarantine? But that other question did come up too, Kathy, if they then go back, do they have to then quarantine again for a third time once they re-enter their state again?
This is where the testing program and protocols are gonna benefit everybody. If we can get updated testing, quick 10-minute turnarounds, I'm sure that's when the quarantine issue will go away.
I'll tell IEDS to get rid on that.
Yes. Are you working on that project?
I have no knowledge of anything in that department. I just handle the accounting. No, you don't want me in charge of the testing.
There's a question here from a property owner at Seaglass Village. They're wondering if they fall under the governor's stage three, and if so, does that mean they can return to their condo on August 1 without having to meet the 14-day quarantine requirements? Or do they have to wait until September 1 before they can come?
Her orders are through July. We don't know what August and beyond looks like. And I'm very serious about the testing and protocols. I really think that's what they're working on to resolve the issue of the quarantine. Every talk show you listen to, it is the quarantine issue, which is the showstopper for people. And I truly believe they're gonna come up with some solution there, and I think we all have to stay tuned to that.
And John, if I could just jump on that a little bit, you know, again, we know that this reopening plan is subject to revision, but as I'm reading it, it still says July and August that the 14 quarantine, excuse me, 14-day quarantine for people entering Maine appears to still be in effect, but again, it's a moving, moving target.
Right. Yeah.
There are questions on enforcement of the quarantine, who is enforcing that, and is there any plan in place to enforce?
Quarantine is a very hard thing to do. You have to have yourself ethically prepped to do it, and there is probably no one that's going to, from the town, that will challenge you, but I think your neighbors might, your people that you're living next to when you come in may say something.
John, I can repeat what I said yesterday is, you know, we're trusting people to do the right thing. I guess if you're, you're not one that wants to do the right thing, then maybe you ought to stay home, not come here. But there are enforcement techniques, I'm not gonna go into those, but I will say it's not, it's not an easy thing. And again, that's why we're, we're hoping people do the right thing. Do what's best for you, the out-of-staters, the locals, everybody. I mean, we're not doing this for ourselves, we're doing this for everybody. And people, people need to understand that. And again, it's people policing people. You know, and that's, unfortunately, that's the way it is right now. And we, if we get complaints, we will react to them, we will go check on people. Someone will hear legitimately, and they, we go on about our business, they go on about their business. So it's, it's a little of everything, but again, we're hoping people's will do, just do the right thing and quarantine and keep themselves safe along with us. And we appreciate that, and I thank everybody for their patience and their understanding with this, because it's not an easy thing for any of us.
Brittany, you have one more question, and we'll move on, and then come back to it later.
Yep. When quarantining, are folks allowed to go to the grocery store or the pharmacy?
No.
I can save the rest for the second open to the public.
Keep your questions, keep your questions coming. We'll have another opportunity in a few minutes. Moving on to current agenda items. Discussion and action on committees, projects, issues, purchases, and personnel. Discussion and action on amending the 2020 annual town meeting warrant to the following articles. Article 18 has been tabled. And Article 19. We need to read that again, John, for this.
No, just add Crescent Beach, you all.
Can I say that again?
We're gonna amend it to. Amended to include Crescent Beach.
You froze up there, Kathy.
Oh, well, it was amended to include Crescent Beach.
Yes.
I'll take that motion then, Kathy.
Thank you. You want me to give the motion? Oh, I make a motion that we accept Article 19, including adding Crescent Beach in the.
Second.
Any further discussion? 5-0, thank you for that. I believe we're moving on now to discussion and action on updates, personnel, ready assignments, resignations, and issues. Nothing from the town manager at this time.
I do have one, Mr. Chairman, members of board. I'd like to turn it over to our fire chief, Mark Dupree, to announce a new hire that we were able to get to have start today or yesterday.
That's correct. We've, we hired Carissa Gordon. She is brand-new, started today, and she'll be working with us through the week, for the next three weeks, and then she'll be put on shift. Things are going right, and she's excited to be working with us. So we're excited to have her.
Great news. Great, welcome aboard. Anything else, John?
No.
Under the Board of Selectmen, we have the reappointment of Justine Belanger as a regular member to the Rec Commission term to expire April 2023.
I move that we reappoint Justine Belanger as a regular member to the Recreation Commission with term to expire April 2023.
Second.
All in favor? 5-0, thank you. Next is the reappointment of Laura Barra as a regular member to the Rec Commission term to expire April 2023.
I move that we reappoint Laura Barra as a regular member to the Recreation Commission with term to expire April 2023.
Second.
All in favor? 5-0 again, thank you. Next is the resignation of Mary McAvoy from the Rec Commission.
I move that we accept the resignation and write a letter of thanks for her service.
Second.
All in favor? 5-0 again, thank you. Next is a discussion and action on accepting donations and bequests. First being $200 gift card donation from Patrick Caston to the Wells PD.
I move that we accept the generous donation and write a letter of thanks to the donor.
Second.
All in favor? 5-0, thank you. Next, discussion and action on approving the minutes of the May 5, 2020 Board of Selectmen's meeting. Any corrections, changes, additions, deletions that we need to do?
And for approval of the May 5, 2020 Selectmen's meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor? 5-0, thank you. Cindy, nice job. Once again, we are back to open to the public for a second time. Brittany, you have some more questions?
Going back to the COVID-19 related questions, there were a couple of questions on whether or not someone gets an out-of-state test. If they bring proof that their test is negative, do they still have to quarantine when entering the state?
Unfortunately, the protocol has not been set up for that to be accepted yet in the state of Maine.
Okay. Moving on to a question about the beaches. One moment. With what communities did we discuss the opening of the beaches, and why was 511 chosen as the opening date? Were there other dates discussed, and what were they? Were there other solutions discussed in addition to prohibiting sitting on the beach? A lot of questions there, but.
I'll start this. We, we have, as a group of town and city managers, and now mayors, have been meeting on a weekly basis. We now include Massachusetts, the North Shore, all of the coastal New Hampshire towns, and the coastline in Maine up to Old Orchard Beach. We talk weekly. Everyone is trying to open up their beaches. What has been the hang-up a little bit is Massachusetts and New Hampshire. Those are governed by, New Hampshire anyway, the governor. In Massachusetts and in New Hampshire, they are trying to think through ways, until the governor opens up, like Hampton Beach, ways to have social distancing in crowded beach locations. And they are working hard on that. There's a recommendation that has gone to Governor Sununu last Friday night to try to open up Hampton Beach as quickly as possible, certainly before the Memorial Day weekend. In Maine, we communicate daily with our friends from Kittery on up to Old Orchard Beach. Scarborough and Old Orchard Beach have the same system as we do. Their beaches were never closed, but they have walking and no sitting. Why May 11? That date was selected by the Board of Selectmen at, at our last meeting.
Thank you. Does the Town of Wells expect to offer property tax relief? Whereas less than 60%, or more than 60% of tax dollars go to the school system?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
John, I can try and help.
Yep.
They're, they're asking if we're gonna offer tax relief because the school's not in session, because the school is part of our tax commitment.
No, absolutely not. We are obligated to pay the school their allocation each month. The teachers are still working, they're still being paid. Food is still being prepared for the lower families in need. The facilities are still operating, electricity and so forth, so no. Those bills are still being paid on a monthly basis by the town. It's allocation to the, to the school.
Okay. Question on the bond. If we were to do the bond and then stimulus or infrastructure money gets passed, would we be negating a chance for those opportunities?
Thank you. I like that question.
I can help with that one, John.
Go ahead.
Will actually put us in a better position to utilize those funds, because the town would have indicated how important these projects are to them. The projects can be worked on by the designers and advanced, and I do expect that we'll see an infrastructure package. And we would be in a very good position to take advantage of that.
I wanted to piggyback on that question. John, I know I briefly reached out to you about applying for grants through the CARES Act. Have we been able to figure out if we can apply for grants to assist with both our general assistance fund and to be able to allocate to small businesses, like Pittaford and Portland have applied, or is that strictly for larger cities?
The information I've seen is for larger cities. We do have a, we do have the Wells Development Corporation, and if that was up and running, we would have a better platform to do that than, than just our, our town government. We are doing a lot of general assistance, a lot of advocacy with our coordinator out there. We we hope more people will call if they're in need. As for businesses, we are not set up to do loans as some communities are with development corporations. And that is a problem. Chief Dupree is looking at the CARES Act with with the tenant and with the Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission who has access to some of that. But the CARES Act is is still being looked at by us.
Yeah, we've been we've been looking at some we've been looking at some contradicting information. The CARES Act is specifically made for communities or areas that have 550,000 in population or higher. But there is some other stuff coming down that it looks like they're trying to get some changes made to the CARE CARES Act that will allow other communities through economic development. But interestingly enough, the stuff that we've just seen come through on that is still not confirmed yet through the county and they're having trouble deciphering it. So we're looking into it and continuing to keep abreast of it if we can. And as soon as we get the information, hopefully we can get it to you guys.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that because I know certainly Bitterford is well under that population threshold. So I'd be interested to see because I think if I'm not mistaken, I think they've already successfully received the grant. So I'd be interested to see what they did and how we can mimic that. Because I think their population, what, three times ours or something like that? So I think we'd be comparable to them.
Right.
Yeah, I I think some of these larger towns, no one in Maine is very big, but the larger communities like Bitterford and Saco, they have economic development commissions. And what I've been trying, what the board has been looking at is taking our Wells Development Corporation and working on the bylaws. And that would create the opportunity for revolving loans or forgiveness loans that we can can do.
Yeah, thank you. I've been looking into that and reading it. So I'd love to be able to revive that so we can start looking at what else we can do.
We've also provided a link on our Facebook page to the CARES Act and to the other parts of that act that are helpful to small businesses and homeowners and and residents and taxpayers that are basically in trouble financially right now. So hopefully those links will also help to get to to help with those people. So.
All right. Question here that we asked earlier, how come we no longer have no littering signs along the roads?
Well, that's a good question. I I haven't noticed them and maybe Carol, you can.
Yeah, I haven't.
Make up some.
We can certainly make those signs. Signs unfortunately do not necessarily control behavior, but we can do an inventory of what's out there and add no littering signs as appropriate.
Can we only have so many signs for the length of the road along the road, Carol?
No, you there are restrictions on federal highways. But no, you can put more signs up. But unfortunately, I wish a sign going up like a speed limit sign controlled behavior, but it does not necessarily help.
I I want to make a shout out to the Road Rangers that are volunteer group that work on cleaning up our roads, particularly the Route 9A and and some of the side roads there. And they were instrumental in getting some of the signage up there too.
Yeah, they do. They do a great job and, you know, they're very good about letting us know when it's time to go pick up what they've picked up. So they do a good job.
All right, next question. Why is the Town of Wells surveying Riverside Drive?
What? The question was what we were doing with Riverside Drive?
Yes, why it's being surveyed.
That's not us that I know of. Unless planning is doing something.
I I'm the Riverside Drive down off Atlantic is being surveyed. We are on a ongoing basis trying to look at the widths of that road. And we have a proposal from the Parking and Traffic Committee to make that a one way road.
Next question. Bayview Terrace was paved this past fall and it looks like it's unfinished on the sides. Are they coming back to put in curbs?
There won't be any curb that's installed there. The shoulders were not backed up, which still needs to be done, but there's also another inch of pavement that needs to be put on that road. That is paved to what we call binder course and it needs a top course. And then you can back up the shoulders and make it smooth. But there's no curb planned for that.
Questions on beach stickers. Can we get them by mail or do we have to pick them up directly at the town hall? And also, what is the cost?
John, I'll take it. Beach stickers are $40 per sticker. They are not transferable. So if you want to take more than one vehicle to the beach, you'll need to purchase beach stickers for every vehicle you want to take to the beach. You can purchase them through the mail if you go to the Town of Wells website, so wellstown.org. On the homepage, there's a button called beaches. If you push that, you'll see the online information and the mail and instructions.
Next question. Was the town's rec summer program canceled?
If I heard that right, what is the outcome of the recreation programs for the summer? Unfortunately, we've had to cancel the summer camp program.
Next question. Can businesses and private groups volunteer to pick up litter on specific roads?
Absolutely. We have, over the years, created this volunteer group called the Road Rangers. We'd love to expand that. We've had early release programs from the county jail and the women's detention program work on our streets. And we welcome volunteers to do it. We ask you to be safe, to wear a fluorescent vest. And if you need bags, we'd be happy to give you those bags. We ask you also to wear gloves.
Maybe we can arrange a day now that we're all, you know, stuck. Most of us are stuck at home that we can arrange a day like we do with the beaches where everyone can go out and do it to encourage it, you know, a certain timeframe might get more people out to do it.
Next question. Did I hear correctly last meeting that the intersection of 109 and 9A is getting a traffic light? If so, when?
Yes, that is correct. It's in the design phase. And once it's out of design, they they will go unless they have to buy any land. It will go to a construction phase after bidding.
What's the timeframe on that, John? I think they were asking about.
What was that?
What's the timeframe on that about?
Well, it's my my sense is it will go out to bid next spring for construction in the summer.
Sorry, it was on mute. There was a question about the We Are Wells Fund and how to contribute. We will post the link to that on the Town of Wells Facebook page. We'll make sure to get that up this week so you all can see where the link is and donate that way. One more COVID related question. Does the board support the removal of the 14 day quarantine wording of the order?
That's a that's really a question for the governor, not for us, nothing to do with us.
And then there were a few questions on the amendment to chapter 150. Who wrote it? What is the definition to STR? And can appointments be made at the town hall to discuss concerns?
Well, right now 150 is tabled and is unlikely to come back to life until the lodging committee is is put together and others are appointed. It's gonna be a process that won't happen immediately.
And John, just to add to that, there'll be plenty of ample opportunity to weigh in for the public during that process.
Right.
Question just came in about the We Are Wells Fund and what it's being used for.
Well, it's being used to help. We've helped St. Mary's in their alternative fuel program. We have through generosity of donation have also given out Hanford gift cards to a number of different people in need. As I said earlier, we we are hopeful that if people are in need, they don't think we're not going to help them. We need to be contacted and we certainly will help them either through our our GA coordinator who is very versed in that or give any of us a call and we'd be happy to be of assistance.
Next question. Are all town employees being tested for COVID-19?
No, the state of Maine has not set that up. Testing is still sporadic until the IDEX program gets started and there's a buildup of tests. That's that's the way it goes. I mean, there are very few tested in the state right now.
Next question. Does anyone know when the library will open?
Great question. I work with the library director every day. We had a department head meeting today. She is also under her Board of Trustees over there and follows a state guideline that the state library system puts out. They the earliest they would open up is early June. They, as all libraries, have a lot to think through with contamination of materials coming in, how how to sanitize those materials, the number of people that can come into the building. And and so what I can tell you is that the building is set up with Plexiglas. All the protocols that way are are in place. It's a matter of her and the and her board finding the requirements from the main library system and trying to implement those. And that the earliest would be June 1st on that.
All right. I'm just doing one final look through, but I think that was.
There's a question that I think we should answer on the chat here. It's about the executive session last week about beach openings and I I think it's important to know that we've really cut back on executive session. We really want to be as transparent as possible. But when we have legal questions that need to be answered, we have to go into the executive session. We don't have a choice and that's why executive session was was invented. We didn't just meet in there to discuss it so nobody could hear. It was because of legal questions that we had to have answered. If anybody else wants, the the question was how we came about the decision to open up the beach. I I feel like we tried to work with other towns, but everyone had a different issue. It's kind of like our lodging issue. You know what I mean? We have our own lodging issues that maybe the state doesn't understand when they when you ask questions of them. You know, if you if you ask the governor or or a lawyer and don't throw in that our these three season cottages are under lodging, they think it's a residence. They say, oh, yeah, you come. It's the same thing with the beaches. We, you know, if you ask like when we, I think during the discussion, when when John was discussing with other towns, one of the ideas was resident beach parking passes and stuff like this. Well, some towns don't have those, so we couldn't open at that time. Upper towns have other things saying, you know, that we we can't, you know, open at certain times. And, you know, and that's all right. We tried. We we tried to cooperate with other towns, but in my opinion, it just wasn't getting done. It wasn't gonna get done. It's not the fault of Gunkwood. It's not the fault of Kenbunkport. They're trying to figure out their own schedule and when they could do it. We felt like we could get it done at this time and it, in my opinion, I've been I've driven down there twice. Like it's working, you know, I heard rumors. We closed the parking lots because we never closed parking lots. It wasn't too crowded. People were down there walking and doing the things that they had to do, you know. I please don't start rumors that that just aren't true about what's going on in the beach. I think we did what we had to do, what, you know what I mean? And and we we the discussion had to happen in executive session because of legal questions. It wasn't trying to hide anything. Now, we came out of there and discussed it again. And we said that the reason we weren't working with other towns, it just wasn't working out. Everybody had different opinions on and and rules that they had to go by. And they weren't gonna be ready. We felt we could get ready by Monday.
Right. And I think there were some safety issues. A lot of people are walking on the roads and and the beach would be a much safer place. That was one of the discussions that we, you know, that we had. And we actually talked about it when we voted on it too as well. And and I've been down the beach yesterday and today and walking and it's like few and far between everybody's spacing out. And and I just think that it's it's nice to have the beaches open. And I've been had so many people so grateful that the beaches are finally open and that they can go down and walk there on all different ages.
And I think why we picked the 11th, it was the it was honestly the soonest that we could open up while logistically being able to with taking the Jersey barriers out of the way, getting the signage down so it can safely open back up. So that's why the 11th was the date that we chose. And I think Agunkwith, their task force just talked last night. I think they said the 18th for for Maine Beach, but they're keeping footbridge closed or something like that. So all these surrounding towns are are following suit and there were, I know York, Old Orchard and Scarborough all had similar plans to us. So it wasn't for a complete lack of communication and and discussion with other towns. It was logistically not able to all have the same exact date with the same exact rules. There were definitely conversations that happened that everyone was on a general same page, but it couldn't be the same exact ruling that every single town came out with at once. So that just wasn't logistically possible, but there were discussions. And everything that we discussed has been said in public now. There was there's nothing that you are lacking for information for what we discussed. There was no secret meeting where we, you know, manipulated the system or tried to get anything different than what you've heard from us here tonight.
Right.
Is there any update on wearing masks in Maine?
Not that I'm aware of, but we are asking people coming into town hall to wear masks. If you don't have them, we'll supply them. And that's it.
There are several several businesses around town that are requiring masks, just so people are aware. So you need to have one in your car. Some businesses are not requiring them, some are. So just have it handy just in case.
Yeah, Jim LePaul is sitting next to me. He indicated that if you're in a situation that you can't be six feet distance, you have to have a mask or into the governor.
Right, he has social distance, yeah.
I still see multiple questions asking us to explain the rationale behind the 14 day quarantine. It's not our order, so it's not our place to explain the rationale because we didn't make it. So I mean, I can't give you the rationale. You have just as much information on the rationale as we do. You're asking personal opinions. That's a that's another thing. I I personally would like to see the 14 day come out of the language earlier than July and August, like they're talking about. Because I think there are ways to safely quarantine, but that's just a that's just a personal opinion and and not a legal opinion on on how to interpret it all. It's still there. I think there could be an argument made that you could safely quarantine in your home state and then come to our state with no contact and still be okay, but that's just not how it reads from the state right now. So it's not something you can do. So it's not something you can do.
Right.
There are, like Sean, there are questions out there about if you come here, and Leah may chime in on this also. If you come here, you stay for three days, yes, you have to quarantine. You go back to Massachusetts for your week, then you come back again, quarantine again. Correct, correct, Leah?
Yeah, I believe so. And again, you know,
That's how I interpret it.
We're not here to talk about the rationales. I think the rationale for that is that, you know, you're coming from perhaps a hotspot and every time you go back and forth, there's the potential to bring the virus with. And therefore they, the governor has ordered every time you come into the state, it's 14 days. Or as John said, however long your stay, if it's less than 14.
Exactly.
So here's another question just come up I want to address because it said I said something. I, I did say that the state has, the state has a different distinction on lodging than we do. My point was when we built these, and Kathy has explained it, I think, three weeks in a row. And I don't want to go into the whole thing.
No.
Our three-season cottages are kind of, are all lumped into lodging for a reason. When you, when you go and ask the governor's office, can a resident go into a thing? And they answer yes, and it's happened twice and it happened at the state, was at the US Attorney's Office too. You didn't, you got to say it's lodging. You got to say that your, the place you want to move into is lodging by definition in the Town of Wells. If you say it's a residence, the answer is going to be different. But under us, it is lodging. We did this in 1980-something, right Kathy or?
Yeah.
You know, it's been on.
Well, after we left Agunkwith, I think, yeah, 80.
81, 82, whatever. It is what our, our rule is. And it's, it's not up for debate for us because it would have to be a townwide vote and all that stuff. And I don't think there's any way the town would want to change it out of lodging into, you know, that's, I could just see us going nuts on that. So it's our rule. That, that part is our rule. And when you ask the governor if you can move into a residence, there's a different answer. But if you ask her if you can move into lodging, the answer would be different than you're getting. So be careful when you write them that you understand that we're under lodging in those places.
Yeah, and the other confusion, which I think Select McLeod wanted to bring up tonight was the issue the governor or her people are saying are primary seasonal residents. That, that is a term that doesn't compute when you're in a lodging situation. And, and so it is confusing in, in Town of Wells. That doesn't really exist.
Right, and what make, you know, what allows these places to be an affordable alternative to live and, you know, own is also, you know, why they were allowed to be built, and that's the density. They would not allow to have been built, meaning you would not own them if that condition wasn't set forth to begin with. That's just a buyer beware situation, unfortunately for situations like this. None of us want to do it and it's just the way it is, so.
We just received a question asking how our first responders are doing and whether or not they have everything they need.
We have, everybody's doing very well so far. We've had a few people tested and we get through those times. We've, we come in contact with people, we get it, it's our job. But we are trying to minimize the risks. We have a lot of personal protective equipment. We have, you know, masks. We're sanitizing everything cruisers daily, sometimes hourly. Same with the desks, reporting area. If you come to the Public Safety Building and you want to speak to an officer in person, you have to sanitize your hands when you first come in and you have to put a mask on. So we're, we're trying to take all the precautions we can to keep everybody safe. Work here plus the people in the public. So I know we've worked with the getting and acquiring a lot of things to keep all the town employees safe when they come back to work.
Another question here about Airbnbs. Are all Airbnbs closed? John, do you want me to pick that one?
Well, but, you know, this is, this is where the short-term rental registration program would let us know where they are or who they are. I can't tell you that they are closed, they're supposed to be closed. But that's, that was one of the purposes of the short-term program, which, which may come back.
I have a question from someone. Aren't campgrounds under lodging in Wells or no?
They are, and it doesn't matter because they are under the governor's order.
Another question here. If lodging community, if our lodging community is not renting this summer, do we still have to staff the office?
That would be up to the association.
Yeah.
All right, I think that's everything.
All right.
Oh, Cindy has one comment. Come on over Cindy.
Yeah, this is a question for Jody. I had a question today about renewing a boat registration. The boat is not at our harbor, it's in a marina. And can they go to the town website to do their renewal? And then would they get their sticker by mail?
Cindy, the boat registrations are done in the town clerk's office. I know there is an online site if it's just a re-registration. They would do that there and the sticker would come to them in the mail.
Okay, so it's through the town, not through the state?
And it's through the state, it's a state program. The town clerk's office, Jessica's office handles those registrations, not my office.
Okay. I will, I will let them know, thank you.
Yeah.
I'll thank you for all the questions. If there's nothing else, John, when you take your seat again, do you have a report?
No, I don't.
That being said, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Five zero, thank you, good night. Stay well, stay safe, we'll see you next week. Good night.
Thank you.